All right, thank you so much TJ. Good morning Board of Commissioners and to the citizens of Douglas County. Today is May 17th, 2021, and we thank you and appreciate you for joining our virtual meeting, 10:00 AM virtual work session this morning. I will start by calling the meeting to order with roll call. I'll start with District One Commissioner Mitchell, Henry Mitchell III. District Two Commissioner and Vice Chairman Kelly Robinson. I know he's on. Commissioner Robinson. Okay. Commissioner Carthen. Okay, I see you Commissioner Robinson, I see you. Okay.
Present.
Yep. There you go. Okay. Commissioner Carthen, and I know you're coming, you're gonna join us momentarily. And Commissioner Guider.
Yes ma'am, I'm here.
Mm-hmm, Chairman. Okay, we have four present and we have one of our Commissioners joining us momentarily. So we have a quorum for the Commissioners. I'll start off this morning asking, requesting a clerk to check our agenda to make sure we don't have anyone signed up for public comment. Clerk, do we have anyone signed up, signed up for public comment? Thank you.
Yes ma'am, we have, I'm sorry, Mr. Levon Dixon. I believe he is on the line already, but before you, and Mr. Dixon, just want to remind you, you have three minutes to address the board. And when your three minutes are up, I will let you know so you can wrap up your comments. And if you could just repeat your name and your subject that you're going to speak about. You can go ahead and begin, Mr. Dixon.
No problem, my name is Levon Dixon, I own a home in Douglas, Douglas, Georgia, from this standpoint. Commission Chair, Chairwoman Jackson Jones, I think she's very familiar with me, I've had a couple of interactions with her. I have a two-part question. One is, I sent over a series of questions to Chairwoman Jackson Jones and also the other Commissioners as well. I've never heard any response back from anyone regarding it. My questions were surrounding the $106,000 I ended up having to pay out for an agreement that my Commissioner actually broke regarding some attorney fees that had to be paid out on his behalf. I sent over a series of questions regarding that matter. I was trying to get some more information surrounding it. And I've never heard anything back from anyone on that. And I want to see if the response is actually gonna be given or if it's just gonna be ignored from this standpoint. So I think I've sent out a couple of requests on that as well. I'll be happy to go through the questions one by one online so we can get them on record. I've requested additional time where I can be able to do that, but that was denied. So I'm limited to three minutes, so I'm not sure if the three minutes will allow me to kind of walk through each of the questions. But if that is not the case, I will be happy to sign up next week and go in question, question by question and make sure they get on the record for that from this standpoint. The other part of my question is, Commissioner Jackson Jones, you were actually very helpful in spearheading, getting some repair work done on the water issue for the water damages coming into my house with the flooding aspect of it. The repair work that was done was savvy, to say the least. They came up and scraped some gravel in front of the house, well, actually not in front of the house, in front of the stormwater drain. From this standpoint, so I'm not sure what that goal of that scraping was in front of the stormwater drain, what it's supposed to achieve. It's, it's, doesn't look like it's going to change anything dynamic of the water flow. It doesn't look like it's gonna eliminate any problems that I've been having with the water flow. I offered, I've requested that the Commission Chair, Jackson Jones, I could come out and take a look at it herself with Miguel present, so they can look at the work themselves. I'd be happy to send pictures of the work that was done. We had quite a few people that were standing around looking as they scraped up the gravel, but they scraped up, scraped up about a half inch of gravel and just left some scrape marks in the, in the street. And I'm assuming that, that they're stating that that was work, that's something that they planned. When I looked at the actual diagram of what they actually stated they were supposed to do, it doesn't even correlate anything close to that. And I welcome the opportunity to hear what type of waterfall engineer actually came up with that strategy of what they employed or came up with that, with that, with that methodology to use to kind of fix the water issue. I spoke to a couple of waterfall engineers and there, there's nothing close to remedying the issue with what was done. So I'm still kind of second limbo with that aspect of it as well with the waterfall issue that's been happening. So I still need some additional guidance on that. And the other, other aspect of it is how does this process actually work in terms of, we get a voice to speak, so I get a chance to come over and speak to my Commissioners, to the Commissioner councils. Are y'all required to respond back or is this something that I just say online and it, it, it just dissipates over time or just choose ignore the comments that are made? Are Commissioners required to give comments or feedback or respond to the questions that I have? I mean, I'm new to this, this area, this, from a government policy standpoint, especially city government, so I'm not sure how this, this all happens. I would love someone to kind of elaborate to me on this, this whole process. If it gives citizens the opportunity to speak, that's great, but if our thoughts are just gonna be ignored and not responded to. I mean, I'm trying to understand the basis of it, if government is still gonna react as if citizens who pay the taxes and who provide the services for the government, to, the revenue for the government to exist are not gonna, you know, have their voices heard and not gonna be responded to their questions. I'm still a little lost at the benefit of this whole forum from this standpoint. This was, I think I sent over a request for the questions that were very valid from this standpoint, and I've never heard a response back. And I've been on this forum a few times in the past and it's been a similar action, whereas I didn't hear back from anyone regarding questions or statements that I've made. So I just wanna get ideas for someone, a Commissioner that's not in my district at all, I will welcome your feedback on it as well, who doesn't oversee my district, how it's supposed to work. Mrs. Watson, if you can kind of explain that to me as well, that'd be great from this standpoint. Because I do plan to be more active in, 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 in city and local government. I'm gonna be here for a period of time. I think my interaction with my Commissioner has really motivated me and kind of opened me up to, to, to get involved in more areas that I, I've never thought of in the past. So I do plan to be a presence in some capacity, especially during election time and in other capacity, anywhere I can be involved. I'm gonna be more active from this standpoint, so I do not plan to go anywhere. So I'd like to be able to develop some dialogue and instant interaction with, 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 with you, Commissioner Jackson Jones, in a, in a very constructive and positive way from this standpoint, moving forward from that, from that perspective. But I think that covers everything that I wanted to touch base on. But again, I'd like to read the area, I did send out a series of questions, they would like some feedback on regarding those questions that I sent out a couple of times last week. I think I sent them to every City Council member on board. If they're not gonna be responded to, just, you know, if someone can just send an email back saying we choose not to respond, that would be fantastic. That will let me know that I don't need to waste my time and send them out to the Commissioners again.
Mr. Dixon.
If they are gonna be responded to, that'll be great, I'm here.
Okay, um, your pastor three minutes, if you could just wrap everything up real quick, please.
Okay, well, I think that summarizes everything for right now. I do plan to be on, on the next round, in the next couple of weeks and subsequent weeks as well from this standpoint. But I think that summarizes everything up until this, to this juncture. And I appreciate everyone's opportunity to speak with you all and I look forward to speaking with you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Do we have any other citizens on the line that would like to make any comments? Chairman, being known, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Clerk Watson. Thank you again, Mr. Dixon, for coming in and expressing your concerns today. Let me just reiterate and just, just clarify something for you. This, the moment for our public comment is primarily for our citizens to speak. We wanted, the Board of Commissioners want to hear your voice. And of course, we, in, in terms of response, the question that you have, the questions that you have posed to the Board of Commissioners are dealing with legal matters. And I'll just be honest with you, I don't have any plans of responding. Certainly, we can chat, but it's nothing that I will put in writing, because again, it is not, number one, relative to any matters related to myself. But just in honor and respect of my Commissioner, that this matter is related to, certainly it's, it's legal. And certainly, we ask you to please, if you could, you could just, maybe if you had a question, maybe you could pose the question to our Attorney. And certainly regarding your water, wanna take a look at that and certainly will ask our county administrator if she could just have our, our Miguel Valentine, who's the Director of Transportation, to take a look at what your, your concerns are. And, and maybe if it's not working right now, if it's not, the plan that has gone forth is not amenable, maybe we can make some adjustments. But certainly, I'm gonna leave that matter in our county administrator's hand to work with our Director of Transportation. And certainly, my office is open and I look forward to speaking to you real soon. Board of Commissioners, we're gonna move on to the approval of the minutes. We have the minutes tomorrow, I ask that you take a look at those minutes and be prepared to approve accordingly. Tomorrow, Board of Commissioners, we have a proclamation. And, yes, Vice Chairman Robinson, certainly, you, yes, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Regarding the meeting minutes, this is to the county clerk. I just wanna make sure that we clarify, and we can talk after this, this is more of a marker for the pen regarding the, the subject matter of our auditor that put forth a recommendation that were very clear in the meeting minutes, that there was a need for clarity for the Board of Commissioners to set forth an ordinance and as well as for a decision that need to be made regarding the legal order, if any, that'll be driven by the three constitutional officers. I just wanna make sure we got that language right and that there's a distinction, so just as a marker, we wanna clarify that. So I'll, we can put it, I mean, we can talk about how you do that, I'm sure you captured it in accurate way and you've got the reading, but I just wanna make sure we're clear. So again, we'll leave it at that, I'll come back to it later. Thank you. You okay, county clerk, you got that?
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair, you have the floor, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chairman. We're gonna move on to tab number four, Proclamations. Board of Commissioners, we have a proclamation tomorrow, recognizing the WellStar Healthcare Team. And that proclamation will be read by me and then, of course, we, we are just very anxious and excited about celebrating WellStar Douglas Healthcare Team, particularly as they have maneuvered through this pandemic and have done an extraordinary job. We're gonna move on, county administrative business, county administrator, do you have anything to bring forth to the Board of Commissioners this morning?
Good morning Chair, good morning Board and staff and listening public. As you probably have heard, we have started to receive guidance on the American Recovery Act funding from the Department of Treasury. Not significant changes since what we heard when the funding was initially announced. What will happen is at our next work session, we'll bring forward some paperwork and authorization for us to initialize the process of receiving our first tranche of funding. And as a board and as, we will need to start to think about a plan as it relates to how that funding is gonna best suit and affect the Douglas County population as well as Douglas County government. And so that has been front of mind. I'll also let you know that I've had several meetings, not just with staff, directors, but also with our elected officials and constitutional officers. Those are going extraordinarily well. Last week, I met with the Tax Commissioner and had really good news as it relates to an item that's on the agenda today regarding his software and several other meetings. So I'm, I'm starting week five, it's gone by fast, but I'd like to let you know everybody's been very supportive and cooperative and it's going really well so far. So unless there are any questions, that's all I have for this morning. Chairman Jones, you are muted.
Thank you so much, thank you so much Sharon Sugada, our county administrator. Board of Commissioners, do you have any questions for our county administrator before I move on to the next item? Commissioner Robinson, I see you're muted.
I'm muted.
Yeah, we can hear you now. You, you're muted again. I'm muted once again. You're still muted. There you go, there you go, you're unmuted now.
Am I?
Yeah. We can hear you.
That's me and my, my legislative aide on who gonna press the button. Okay, got it, all right, we're good. Real quick, regarding the Recovery Act, yes, week five, we appreciate your presence. So, and I, and so my question is, as you align a long-term capital plan, there were some pre-existing needs that are already of record. There are some new needs that are coming online based, based on new stakeholders who are at the table. So per needs versus new needs. We've always known that we've had a, a need for long-term capital planning and we, we're down that path. The American Recovery Act is, is a new source of funding. Right, so it's something that just, it, you know, it just dropped in. Right, so there's our normal long-term capital plan approach that we're looking to. So those things that how we fund capital items is typically SPOLOs, T-SPOLOs, GEO bonds, et cetera. There's only about four funding mechanisms that the, the Board has in its toolkit. I, I know that we're, we're down the path of a strategic plan and you guys are working on that framework. At what point, so here's the question, at what point will we sit down and that be revealed to us as far as the approach? Right, because we're, we're being made to ask decisions, and again, I know you're, you're becoming new to this, but we're being made to ask decisions that have long-term implications, like when one of our Congressman came to us and we had to commitment to pursue $80 million, right? And so you, we've got these moving parts. And I'm, I'm looking for when will we anticipate, I know we talked about doing a budget retreat, well, that's usually July and August. But this stuff is coming down now. So when will, question is, when will we meet as a board to talk about this specific item? And two, I would encourage the administration to, Commissioner Carthen sponsored a resolution from our, our last round of funding from last year. I'd, I'd like for us to also acknowledge that, that keeping it up, it was a separate bucket, there was a resolution, how will we appropriate that? So there's appropriation associated with this, with federal money, and then there's normal operations. And I, I'm looking for an alignment, a more crystallized approach to, to capital planning. So when will we have that, when can we anticipate that conversation? I'll stop there, that's all I needed.
Would you like me to respond Sharon, or would you like me to do it?
Well, you.
Let me start by saying, Commissioner, we are certainly working and moving in the direction to meet with the full Board as soon as possible. This funding, this recovery relief funding has a lot more restrictions than that so-called contingency funding we use. Contingency was straight off, it was reimbursement from the CARES Act. But, and, and of course, then the contingency funding that we, that we're utilizing now was part of our, it was really, could it have been appropriated back into our general fund? So that was contingency. But this recovery relief has quite a few restrictions to it. So I'm quite sure that Sharon, our community, I mean, our county administrator and our external affairs director will, they will brief us to allow, to give us an idea of what the restrictions look like. And then certainly, I love the idea of a resolution and I know the Board, all of the Board, we like the idea of a resolution, but we just wanna brief you all and let you know exactly what those restrictions look like and then maybe we can build around those restrictions. And certainly, I'm gonna yield to you, our county administrator, if you could add to what I just stated.
Well, I will certainly go back and look at the resolution that was previously passed and of course, look at what the funding can be used for and see how we can have an alignment with our needs based on some capital planning has been done. Our outside financial advisor did a pretty thorough job. I think there are some updates to that that are needed. So to your point, Commissioner Robinson, some pre-existing capital needs as well as some that I've identified even since I've been here. But what I think we need to also look at is how does that align with what the funding can be used for? And so we already have the finance group looking at any lost revenue, because certainly that is a, that is, that's low hanging fruit. That's clearly something that can, can be used for, and we do have some pockets of lost revenue. So that will be probably our, one of our first asks. But once that reimbursement is made, then this Board will have the opportunity to appropriate that money. I will make recommendations on how I think you ought to do that, but certainly the decision is yours.
Thank you very much, both of you, for your response. Yes, it's just, it's just alignment of the overall plan. This is something that historically, we, we, we've evolved to a need to mature financially in this area, which is why we, we invited you here to the party, which is why we're seeking a Director of Finance, in other words, like no duly noted. But, and you've got it. But we also recognize our current state of affairs, like, okay, now, show us. We, we're having conversations here live. Show us, show us the plan, right, show, show us the detail that's associated with that so that we can make an adequate, rich decision. So you guys get the point, I don't have to belabor this. And my last point now, you have the floor, which is to your point, are we still in executive mode? Last year, the Board of Commissioners passed a resolution, almost this time last year, when obviously we went into lockdown. What a year, to think that we're not on the other side of that, that was a dark time. Oof, and to be here at this moment, but we went into executive mode to give Madam Chair full authority to run things. I don't know what the governor has done recently, does, is that still in effect? I've always known that we, as a Board of Commissioners, can take that back to normal operations to, to be it. I'm open to my, my peers' comments regarding that, but are we still in a state of emergency? Or, but it's something that we properly, is the county attorney out there, I want you to weigh in on that, are we still in that mode, Ken? And if not, I mean, just legally, are we still in that mode and does there need to be an action taken or does it just by default, it rolls off? How about I say that one?
I think the current order expires on May 22nd, and I do think there is a partial order in place. I think it's, and it's always been in y'all's purview, purview as separately under home rule as to how y'all treat an emergency. But as far as the state, there are some easing of restrictions, but there's still restrictions in place. And I think the last order modification date was through May 22nd and another one is probably forthcoming, based on what I've heard. And if somebody else knows more than that, please weigh in.
No, that was sufficient, I just, again, May 22nd, I'll let you guys respond. And I, I've taken adequate time, Madam Chair, let me leave you the floor, thank you, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on, county administrator, does that wrap up your business that you have to present to the Board?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our business items of the Board of Commissioners, which is tab number five. Tab number five is Authorization for the Chairman to Sign Service Contract for Juvenile Programs Utilizing Recovery Unlimited as a Treatment Provider for Strengthening Families Programs Under the CJCC Grant Executed on 3/16/21. We have our Director Jennifer King, you have the floor, you could expound on this business item.
Good morning. This is a, I'm sorry, can you hear me? This was a requirement for this grant that, that we executed in March, the provider that we will be using for this treatment service, Recovery Unlimited. And this just sets out the agreement with them to provide the services, the specific services that we are requesting and then Unlimited is a partner that we've had here in juvenile programs for a long time. They provide a lot of various services to our kids and families here. And then just to kind of retouch on strengthening families, this was an evidence-based program that works with youth and family to communication skills, their coping skills, the way that they work within this program. It also includes a family meal every week that we also provide through the grant to just encourage those ways of being together and communicating about all the things that are going on in their lives.
Thank you so much Director King. Board of Commissioners, we have any questions for Mrs. King?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on, Board of Commissioners, to tab number six. We're gonna, to approve to add three new positions, Registration Officers, Inventory and Systems Manager and Distribution and Warehouse Manager to the Elections Department. Director Kidd, you have the floor.
Good morning to the Board of Commissioners, Madam County Administrator, county personnel and to the general public. I would like to start with reading a letter that was sent from the Board of Elections to the Board of Commissioners. You all should have received a copy of this letter, it's also been included in the minutes for today's meeting. The letter reads as follow. Dear Madam Chair, as you may know, the 2021 Georgia General Assembly adopted a new piece of elections legislation. From reviewing the legislation, our office, like many other offices throughout the state, is evaluating how we conduct elections and evaluating personnel needs. We have recognized some deficiencies in the staffing that needs to be addressed in the Department of Elections and Voter Registration. We are writing to ask the Board of Commissioners to kindly consider our request to create the following positions in the Department of Elections and Voter Registration as soon as possible. These include Registration Officer, Inventory and Systems Manager, Warehouse and Distribution Manager. The new positions will need to be trained at the first, and the first opportunity for this is the annual conference, which will be held on August 29th through September 2nd, respectfully by the Georgia Association of Voter Registration Elections Officials. So your immediate action on this request is greatly appreciated. The newly adopted legislation will require additional days of voting, new requirements for possible additional precincts, additional poll workers, all of which have to be administered by the county elections workers acting at department leads with temporary staff acting under them. Douglas County Board of Elections and Registration feels the additional positions created will place the department in a better position to administer the elections process. The office currently consists of three separate locations, which will require permanent staff to oversee temporary staff working at the following locations. The main office at 8700 Hospital Drive, the warehouse and distribution office located at the Douglas County Elections Annex Suite A, our newly constructed absentee processing center also located at Douglas County Annex Suite D. In addition to the 2020 election cycle, saw the introduction of new election management systems, the election day administration system. This cycle also saw the overall increase of participation rates of voters throughout the state of Georgia. These facts combined with the fact that the state of Georgia is preparing to enter into a new redistricting phase have perpetuated the need to look at the current staff and allocations for the Elections Department. Furthermore, during the 2010 election cycle, the active voter total for Douglas County was 53,868. The 2010 cycle was the last time that the state of Georgia went through a redistricting phase. We are currently at an active voter total of 103,342 voters. Douglas County voters continue to outpace the voter participation rates, even surpassing statewide participation numbers. Currently, the Elections Office is operated by only four permanent staff members, one of which is the Elections Director. We feel that the fast-paced and changing nature of elections requires individuals who are trained and in place during all election season. The office right now is operating and has operated with mostly temporary staff members, who by the nature of temporary staff members do not have invested interest in the office. Thus, this model creates high turnover rates. It, it takes upwards of two years to adequately train staff members in election laws and procedures. Due to the complicated nature of elections and registration, we feel the office requires individuals that will be with the department on a permanent basis and thus removing the obstacle of departmental knowledge that leaves with each temporary staff member applying in permanent employment somewhere else. Over the last five years, our staff has been so sought after by other registration offices that they have recruited from our temporary staff. We would like to retain that knowledge base inside of Douglas County Board of Elections and Registration. It is important to note that with the increased number of voter engagement and participation in the office, the last time the office hired new staff was in 2010. We hope that you would take the request into consideration. For these three positions, will allow the department to be in a better position to handle the changes that will affect future elections and adhere to mandates in the laws that not only affect Douglas County Elections and Registration, but other Elections Offices throughout the state of Georgia. Thank you in advance, respectfully submitted. Maisha Good, Election Board Chair, David Fiedak, Election Board Vice Chair, Bob Proctor, Election Board Member, Maurice Hurley, Election Board Member, Steve Sutton, Election Board Member. I've also taken the time to prepare a slide presentation outlining, outlining some of the duties to which we feel that these new positions will be required to do. I've transmitted that presentation to our Communications Director, Mr. Rick Martin, if he's able to put those slides on the screen as well.
Yes, we're in the process of doing that right now.
Okay, next slide, please. The first of these positions, which we will be discussing, are Inventory and Systems Manager. This is just some photographs of some of our elections equipment that's separated between the locations. Next slide, please. These are some of the duties under the Inventory and Systems Manager. We have the slides up here. You all can read them for yourself, but essentially, the Inventory and Systems Manager will be responsible for cataloging our inventory with the Elections Department. Just some rough facts and figures for you all. Our BMDs, which are our ballot marking devices, the systems that which we vote on, those alone are $1.6 million investment into our county. The poll pads are how we mark voters inside of polling locations. Those are $72,000. The UPSs are battery backups, are $60,000. We have $100,000 worth of elections equipment. We have $52,125 worth of ink. We have $49,000 worth of paper. Next slide, please. A part of their duty description include general preventative maintenance. It'll give you all time to read the slide. Next slide, please. On an ongoing monthly, monthly, quarterly basis, we are required to do certain things to the equipment, to test the equipment, to charge the equipment, to maintain that it's still in good working order. These are requirements under Georgia election law. We have cited the different user code section under this slide. Next slide, please. Once again, outlining preventative maintenance. These are polling place scanners, which are disseminated to all of our precincts. These polling place scanners are upwards of $5,000 a piece to replace as well. Next slide, please. Each of, we have a printer capacity with each of our elections equipment. We have gone from, when we distribute elections equipment, it used to could be disseminated with one truck. We're now having to disseminate equipment between four and five 26-foot box trucks, as well as vehicles with personnel assisting each of those trucks with loading and unloading. Next slide, please. These slides will be made available on our website. We've also disseminated copies to the board and its respective members as well. Next slide, please. The Warehouse and Distribution Manager, this leads into our next component. We maintain all of the equipment for upwards of 30-plus locations, which we're currently looking at expanding those locations for advanced voting and election day. Essentially, we have agreements with these locations to, for them to provide us with a facility. We have to bring all equipment, all of our needs for administering elections into these facilities. So, we have to house, store, and catalog all of that equipment as well, which is one of the main jobs of the Warehouse and Distribution Manager. Next slide, please. As I stated earlier, we have to transmit all of this equipment to all of our advanced voting and election day precincts. Essentially, when you think of elections and registration, most people don't look at it at this, but I like to state that we're in, we're in distribution and systems management. By that, I mean, we plan large-scale events that all have to happen simultaneously. Next slide, please. Some more of our elections equipment that go to the different precincts and poll managers. Next slide, please. The last of the three positions is the Registration Officer. All of my staff have primary duties assigned to them, they also have secondary duties. The Registration Officer will be responsible for general registration activities throughout the county. When you do your change of address with the driver services, we get a record. When you submit a change of address with the postal service, we get a record. When you mail in a voter registration, we get a record and update your account. But they will also take on the added duties, because this is a year that the US Census was conducted. So later on in this year, the state legislature will be meeting to redraw the redistricting lines. That means that we will have to adjust the voter files of a substantial number of our Douglas County voters. What you see on the screen is the numbers presented the last time we were entering into this phase. At that time, we had roughly 53,868 active voters. Since then, we have essentially doubled in capacity to 103,342 voters. Roughly, that means based off of our current permanent staff and allocations, each of our staff is responsible for upwards of 25,000 to 27,000 voters. The end of, that's the end of the slides, please. I'll address any questions or concerns from the board at this time.
Thank you so much, Director Kidd, for providing that very thorough update for the Board of Commissioners. Certainly, it's very evident that our volume has increased in terms of the number of voters here. That tells us that our county is growing exponentially. Board of Commissioners, you have any questions for our Director regarding this request? I see a hand, but I don't know whose hand. Okay, Commissioner Guy, I don't see your name with the hand, that's why I said, Commissioner Guy, you have the floor.
Yes, Director Kidd. A 92% increase, you're saying? I know that we got a million-dollar grant from Zuckerberg, and there's been a lot of publicity about that because of their stance in the politics of our nation. But what were some of the requirements of that grant? Did, I know we had more drop boxes, but when you had more drop boxes, did you also have both parties present when you emptied that drop box? What precautions did you take to ensure the integrity of the election? And also, I would like to know, I read in a magazine that Douglas County had 101% more people registered to vote than were of age to vote. And those figures were turned over to the state. Is there, are there any pending investigations? Have we been cited on anything regarding our numbers?
Okay, I'll begin with the first part of your question. The grant funding we received, we received grant funding from, well, this is multiple grants. Altogether, Douglas County received 2.2 million in grant funding. You referred to one of the donors to the organization. We did not receive any grant funds directly from Mark Zuckerberg. Mark Zuckerberg, like many other philanthropic individuals, donates to philanthropic organizations. We received a grant from the Center for Tech and Civic Life. The Center for Tech and Civic's life commitment to Elections Offices is to just provide funding and allow that office itself to administer that funding in the best way that they feel is responsible for their individual citizens. That funding did not come with any what you would perceive as strings. By that, I mean, each of the counties had to submit a proposal of how they felt that those funds could be best allocated. But the overall oversight for the administration of those funds is completely county-controlled. So essentially, these were organizations that saw the work that Douglas County Board of Elections and Registration was making in the elections process, and decided to help us with those funding. To answer the second question you received with our voter rolls, I have seen the article that you are referring to with 110%. That was a Facebook article that was inaccurate. There has been, and there, there isn't any state investigations into our voting rolls, because that information was wholly and falsely inaccurate. And what I feel is just a way of causing divisions in the process. Our voting rolls are not just maintained by the Elections Office. The Secretary of State actually has access to our complete voter rolls. And they maintain on a continuous basis what the county voter rolls are for each county in Georgia. And they also scrutinize our voter rolls on a regular basis as well, and send information to us to check cases. So we are in complete compliance with the state as far as our voter rolls are concerned.
Okay, just to clarify, it was not a Facebook thing, it was in a magazine, but it was 101% more people registered to vote than was of age to vote.
But that initial order from the magazine started with a Facebook article of the same nature, but those unsubstantiated claims that hold no actual basis in fact.
But now, I know the federal government requires us to purge our voter list. Do you do it every year? As they have not voted in four years, do you purge the list?
I don't like to use the term purge because of the device nature that is associated with that. We do what's called list maintenance. Our list maintenance is required by the state of Georgia and required by every, what required based off of every Elections Office. That's set by a specific set of rules. We have to engage those voters. If there is any question about the residency of a voter, we send a confirmation notice to that voter. We also follow up with that confirmation notice. The way it works is, once a confirmation notice has been issued to a voter, they have 40 days to respond to that confirmation notice. If they do not respond within, if they do respond within their 40 days, their record is updated with us having contact with their voter, and they're up to date. If they do not respond to that letter, then they go into what is called inactive status. Our voting rolls currently.
I think the state law requires too, that you follow up to, if you're going to remove somebody's name. Our legislature passed a law saying you had to give them notice or warning that their name would be dropped if they, since they had not voted in the past four years, or something like that. So you do this every year?
Yes, we do, it's a continuing basis for list maintenance. The only requirement against list maintenance is there are certain timeframes right before an election to which were procured by law to stop those activities, which for Douglas County Board of Elections, we comply with all state, federal, and local laws as it pertains to elections and registration.
Well, I just know with my circle of friends and acquaintances, and even family members, they receive, remember, in the primary last year, ballots were mailed out to everybody, okay? And they receive people, ballots for people that had never lived at that house, because they knew who had lived there prior. And so, there were a lot of reports of this type thing, so that's concerning. Even in my own family, my, a family member received a ballot for somebody at their address that had never lived at their address. So, and they reported it back to you. They, unfortunately, they didn't take a picture of it, but they did take a picture of it and send it to you, yes. But, so we are purging the files. And I hate to use that word, but I think that's what it's called anyway. We are.
Actively do list maintenance, yes ma'am. And to address the statement that you just made, we do not send unsolicited ballots to individuals. What happened?
Did last year in the primary, yes.
Didn't send unsolicited ballots to individuals. Nobody that received their ballot from, well, let me state it like this. Everyone that received a ballot from any Elections Office, we have to have notification on file of that ballot, which we retain all of that notification. What happened last year is that that was an emergency declaration by the governor during the primary election, that the state of Georgia sent every voter a application for an absentee ballot. Every voter associated with an address did receive an application. Then, as a follow-up, certain third-party groups also sent applications for absentee ballots, free field applications for absentee ballots to the voters in the state of Georgia. What, what, that happened multiple times last year, but that was the application itself. In order to send that ballot to a voter, we have to have a signed notification from that voter on a state-approved form to send out a dollar. We're also required to maintain those forms. And for any individual that feels that they received a ballot unsubstantiated, I welcome them to stop by the Elections Office, and we can pull that application and show them. I've had several individuals that did not remember submitting those applications, but those applications also require you to physically sign and supply information to which we can pull all of those applications. I will say also, those applications had been submitted to the state of Georgia, which we have been found in compliance with our complete election.
Okay, I've taken up too much time, Madam Chair, and I'll be back. Thank you, thank you for asking questions, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Guy, and thank you so much, Director Kidd. Any other comment from the board? Okay. Okay, Commissioner Carthen.
I have a quick question. Is it possible for Director Kidd or Director Sougan to give us the actual financials or the appropriations that's going to be needed to carry this out? Because this is a lot of requests, so we know that the money that we've set aside is probably going to go up. We just need to know what that looks like from a board standpoint, so that we can do the correct appropriations where we can.
Yes, ma'am. I've supplied as part of this briefing, the total budgetary impact. I've been working with our current Finance Director to produce what this looks like as far as budgetary requirements for future years. This base salary for all three positions at $31,000 plus benefits amounts to $173,230 addition to our yearly budget. Now, I'm asking that these positions be created this year, because we have a smaller election season this year, so this will give me time to work with these individuals before we go into next year's election season. The midterm election season for Douglas County is a larger election season with a number of county offices that will be on the ballot. Douglas County tends to have higher voter turnouts during years in which their county contests on the ballot. Now, I'm asking that these positions be created this year. Now, I'm asking that these positions be created this year. But like Madam Guyton stated, we did receive grant funding. So we have been in communication with the finance department to say that we can fully cover these three positions for the current season so there will be no current budgetary impact on these positions. What we are looking at and what we are asking this board is to make an investment into the office going forward. I fully anticipate as a department to seek further grant funds and things like that. But those are not guaranteed funds, whereas the workload based off of these positions are present currently, uh, in the department and will continue to be a, a need for the department. So I'm asking Douglas County to make an investment in the elections office with the understanding that the investment based off of Douglas County, just like, uh, before, was one of the guiding principles for the Center for Tech, the Center for Tech and Civic Life, the Arnold Schwarzenegger Institute, and multiple other organizations making a two-point-two-million-dollar investment in our department over the last two years. The...
Thanks.
I'm sorry, basically to ask you a question, you all should have in the packet for today, the breakdown for financial consideration of these positions as well.
And Director Kidd, does that also include space?
It does include space. Part of the grant funding is we've been constructing a build-out for our office staff. This was also courtesy of the two-point-two-million in additional funding that we have been able to receive. We have been taking a long-term approach to elections and registration and trying not to be reactive, but be proactive and anticipate the needs of the office and of the county going forward.
Thank you so much. With that, Madam Chair, you?
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Carthen. Anything else, Board, before we move on?
Yes, I do have one more question.
Okay, now I saw Commissioner, uh, Robinson lean in. Commissioner Mitchell, you can go in. And of course, uh, you can close the show, uh, Commissioner Robinson.
And, and he might want to start working on trying to get his mute, get his mic off mute. But what I'll do, just only one, one or two questions. So, uh, Mr. Kidd, so with the mobile unit that we got grant funding for, we still have that unit and what the, what would be the purpose of, none of the laws have changed? What that unit, I'm just curious though, on that. That's my first question.
Yes, sir. We still have that unit. The Senate Bill two oh two, which is the election registration, actually instructs each county to secure a mobile vote, mobile voting unit for emergency purposes. Going forward, under the new election bill, we can still utilize, uh, the mobile voting unit in emergency purposes. We can also use it for training and voter education. During the twenty-twenty election cycle, we actually had several days in which several precincts, due to power outages from a storm, that were incapacitated. Having, uh, this mobile voting unit in our inventory allows us, even though we can't necessarily deploy it, uh, based off of our previous, uh, uses that we wanted to use it to alleviate voter lines, for emergency purposes, this is still a viable option. This also gives us a way to take voter education to the voters themselves because this is essentially is a functioning precinct. Voter education outreach is one of the passions of this office, so it will be utilized still in that capacity as well. And it will also be utilized, once again, in emergency purposes, which this last presidential election year, we did have precincts go down during the timeframe of early voting. In those cases, we would have been able to use this bus as a continuity of operations.
Okay, so, so with that, so the laws that have changed still allow you to, if I'm hearing you correctly, to, you have the ability to take this vehicle to whatever site and, and post up and vote then from this particular vehicle? If I'm hearing you correctly, or am I?
Yes, sir. You are hearing me correctly.
Okay, okay, good. Um, because I just, I just felt bad with the, the changing of the law and all the other good stuff. It kind of, to me, eliminated that type of, of a use for voting purposes. But on to the next question. The monies or the grants that we're speaking of and the employees that you're trying to, you know, uh, suggest that you need to kind of move us forward to be proactive. Is all this grant funded or we got to budget this? Or, or is that a question for you or, or Sharon? Or you, maybe you could help with that answer today as well?
I can weigh in on that, um, Commissioner. The current year for a hundred and fourteen thousand will be grant-funded. The future full year of a hundred and seventy-three thousand will need to be included in our fiscal twenty-two budget preparation.
Got it. And that would be also, I'm assuming, benefits in the whole ball of wax, correct?
That's fully loaded, yes, sir.
Fully loaded, okay, got you. Okay, all righty, um, all right. And, and I guess last but not least, now with the, the new law that, that stated that you can't have all the drop boxes and all the other good stuff, what are we doing for Douglas Countyans, for those voters to be able to do this, which will have to be inside somewhere like the courthouse or something of that caliber? So what are the plans for that?
The, the new law mandates that a Dropbox, uh, be in your main registration office because an individual has to have eyes on that Dropbox location for the entire timeframe. We're going to put a Dropbox location inside the Board of Elections office to be in compliance with the new law. The new law also dictates that it can only be available during the timeframes in which early voting is accessible. So we will be in compliance. As far as our external units, we have at this time not removed our external units. They are physically locked. The current election law is currently facing, uh, several election-related challenges to the law. So we are in a holding pattern with our external units, waiting on those decisions by the court before we take the steps of removing those external units. But right now, they're just locked and no one can put anything in them. Closer to the timeframe of for an election, we will put a signage on those units directing individuals to where the one, uh, box based off of our population size will be located now. Because based off the current law, anyone with a hundred thousand voters or under will only allow one Dropbox location, which like I stated, has to be inside of your office. And you physically have to have either a poll worker or officer watching said box for the entire timeframe that it just opened.
Yeah, so, so if I'm hearing you correctly, there's only one, uh, based on our county size. As you said, under a hundred, it's one. Is it over a hundred? It's...
A hundred thousand. Uh, well, roughly, we, it's, uh, the, the next highest jump, uh, for that box would be over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. So... To add, under the current legislation, to add an additional Dropbox location.
I got you. Okay, all right. I yield back. Thank you again. And Sharon, thank you again. I appreciate it. I yield back.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, um, Robinson, you have the floor.
Can you hear me?
I can.
All right, very good. Yeah, this, this required all of us to weigh in. This was an important topic. So I, I appreciate joining the conversation regarding elections. It's the only reason that we exist. You know, obviously without, um, obviously, the, the elections, there's really no real America, the great experiment. So this requires us to have a conversation. A- again, I, I do want to acknowledge back of the whole, thank you for the clarity, Director Kidd, regarding, um, the Zuckerberg and the clarity. I mean, I, I won't get into that. To me, obviously, you, you, you can't be convened on both sides. You can't live on Facebook and then complain about its influence. Uh-huh. Right? Um, I tend to be a PBA slash NPR type guy, but okay, I, I get, everybody get disus wherever they get from. That's fine. That being said, um, Director Kidd, you know that we need to strengthen. And I'm glad to see that the Board of Elections recognized. I've been waiting on this. Uh, when they move the cheese, you have to get ahead of this. Elections are important. The current movement by the state, well, it destabilized by design. And with, with the veil of we're strengthening. No, it didn't. But it's okay. I get it. We just have to make sure we're, we're, it's a mandate. Doubt shall. We need to get ahead of this. So duly noted, I, I think, um, Commissioner Carthen hit on the head. I just wanted to get to the net. Okay, what is the fiscal impact? And I think you guys clarified that. Uh, uh, thank you. County Mad Administrator as well, which is like, okay, in this immediate year, what is the impact? Got it. And, and ongoing. So the grant will take care of it this year. We got it going forward next year. Um, you, you need to have formality. Um, uh, it, it's too wrought with a lot of volunteers. And people come with, they're obviously their political band and how they do it and how people are treated at the polls. You need more stability. I mean, that's the whole point. You won't drop this down on this, on, at the local level? And there's no funding? And you're gonna make it like, it's, everything's got to be doing working hours? What? But okay. So that means there's going to be increase in the budget to deal with that unfunded mandate. I have no problem with that. So, uh, I, I won't go as long. Um, duly noted, I'm open to this. Um, I guess whatever they ask is, so are we asking for this to be, are we voting tomorrow? Is that what I'm hearing? For the adjustment for the budget? Is that what we're asking for?
For this current year, yes, because we're addition, we're adding three additional pe- positions.
All right, well, we got to do what we got to do. Again, we'll get those mandates. You, you got to adjust now. You want to show me how it's going to work? I don't have to belabor this right now, um, a- again, but it is what it is. Um, I'm sufficiently clear for the moment. Madam Chair, we've gone long enough. I yield the floor. I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chairman. And thank you so much, um, Director Kidd and our county administrator, as you chimed in. Certainly, um, we will pivot and make adjustments accordingly, uh, to this unfin- uh, unmanned, um, unfunded mandate. We're going to move on. Board of Commissioners, it's your pleasure. We're going to move on to tab number seven, authorization to purchase a seventy-two-inch commercial mower of a total cost of nine thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars to be, uh, funded through the twenty-sixteen SPOLOX funds allocated for the equipment as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Oversight Committee. Director Dukes, you have the floor.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Yes, we're requesting to purchase a seventy-two-inch mower that we use. These, these mowers are used to maintain our park system and to cut grass throughout the system. And it is a recommendation of the Recreation Oversight Committee, and it will be SPOLOX funds.
Okay, thank you so much, Director Dukes. Any questions from the board? All right, we're going to move on. Thank you so much, uh, Director Dukes. We're going to move on board to tab number eight, authorization to purchase an infield grooming machine at a total cost of twenty-one thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars to, um, be funded through the twenty-sixteen SPOLOX funds allocated for equipment as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Oversight Committee. Director Dukes, you have the floor again.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, another piece of equipment that's vital to our operation. We use it to maintain our ball fields throughout the county, uh, and get them ready for the games for all the athletic associations, recommended by the Oversight Committee, and again, SPOLOX funds.
Okay. Any questions from the boards or remarks? Thank you so much.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you. Uh, very quickly, this is related, since you mentioned sports. So obviously, it's, uh, we've got new facilities coming online, specifically the community center. Um, and I'd like to get a status on the building itself. Um, um, that, that cannot go without being addressed. As I know, we had weather-related impact. I was hoping that we'd have an opportunity during the SPOLOX update, but we didn't get that. That's fine. But we still have to have accounting every month on that hundred million dollars. And so I'd like to know, where do we stand on the building and how you will address? I mean, obviously, um, you've got, um, you know, the upcoming season and how that's going to be addressed. Can you respond to that, Director Dukes? Where we standing, please?
Yes, sir. As far as the building is concerned, we are about ninety percent, uh, complete with the building. Uh, they initially had anticipated a July first turnover. Uh, we have had some concerns with the elevator. Uh, some of the equipment in the elevator was, the building that housed the components of the elevator, uh, was damaged in a tornado over in Alabama. They are now assessing that building and moving equipment from one building to another, uh, to see if there, the equipment was damaged and if there will be any delay getting any of that equipment to us. Uh, we should hear something next week, uh, from the company. Uh, so, um, we're kind of waiting on hold. Uh, other than the elevator, we're on, uh, we're on course to hit the completion date. As far as, uh, opening, uh, we are now interviewing staff and, uh, our recreation manager and our recreation coordinators were receiving applications and hope to have someone hired shortly.
Thank you, Director Duke. So to, to, but on behalf of District Two, which is important, this was an important initiative that came forth. Um, it's something that's important to the two thousand sixteen SPOLOX. This is what the public asked for. So again, we get all the way down here to the end and i- it's important that we continue, um, um, updating the public on, uh, those key deliverables. Um, um, I, while we appreciate plans, um, and, you know, one of the things that's important for the public is like, show us the fruit of what I asked for before. And so this is, um, Director Dukes, you know, um, this was important. Um, I, I wanted to make sure I give an account to the citizens. Okay, like, wait a minute, now what happened? Just tell the public. There was damage. And so, okay, how are you going to now reconcile that? Just tell them. And so I, I need to get the status on that. So Commissioner Mitchell, I know you got this, man. Will you please make sure to re- recover this and make sure we adequately have information that we can share with the public on, with the status of that building, um, and when it comes online? And, and again, if we have to pause delivery date because of the elevator, that makes sense. We will not expose the public. I cannot allow you to use, I cannot support, you know, taking some equipment from a damaged building to be put in there. Tell the public where we are. Um, and, and, and keep that thing moving. Um, so, uh, again, I appreciate the response. Madam Chair, I yield the floor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else, Board of Commissioners are going to move on. Thank you so much, Director Dukes. Uh, Commissioner Mitchell, you have the floor.
Just one quick comment. So, I don't know, Gary, do you want to, I, I mean, yes, Vice Chairman Robinson, we are actually trying to, I guess, look to where we are, but I don't know, Gary, do you have an update? Or do you want to kind of, kind of look into that before you make a comment on that, that particular question? I think you're frozen on me, Gary. Okay, so, I, I, I'll do it this way. So there will be a next...
I can jump in.
Okay, go ahead, uh, Madam, uh, Manager, go ahead.
Yeah, I prefer that we get back to you. Um, we were looking at some alternate sources for that elevator equipment. Um, I'm not sure that that will be successful. And as you know, we're revamping our SPOLOX presentation, but that information will be coming back in a more meaningful fashion to you.
Understood, understood. And I just knew that, that part of it. And I, I guess I just wanted to, Gary, to kind of update the Vice Chairman, but you're right, that, that information will be kind of coming forward. And you're right, we don't know exactly what that looks like until we find out more on that, that particular company situation and or whether we move, if we move in a different direction to get the elevator. And it will not be used or damaged good.
That's correct.
In, in this, this nice building, so.
That's correct.
Okay, I, I'll leave it there, though. Thank you, uh, Sharon. I appreciate it. And Gary, you're frozen, so we can't get, we don't get a chance to talk to you. We'll talk to you later. I yield back, Manager.
Okay, thank you so much. We're going to move on to tab number nine. Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson.
Whi- which is really just to that point. If a key deliverable is, uh, we've established a schedule, which is July first. And something along the, the critical path has happened, such as the delivery of, um, um, functionality allows you to get it up and down the building. Um, and it's okay. That means that the, the bomb's already gone off. Right? So the question becomes, if the, if it's on the critical path, that means by default, the date slips. You'll work out the detail associated, like, okay, what happened or not. But in, in setting the public's expectation, like, they're looking at, well, okay, we know that it already happened. So are we looking at a one-month delay? And so that's really what I'm getting at. I'm not get, trying to get into the weeds. It's setting the public's expectations. It's their, their understanding. There's no reason to suppress that. Just like, okay, guys, something happened. We have no control over Mother Nature. They get it. So the question becomes like, okay, so we're probably off by thirty days. So we're looking at August first. That's fine. You, 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 that's fine. You will work out the details as far as, I mean, the obligation and all that stuff. And you work through all that. I, really, I'm just trying to get to setting the public's expectation, right? Um, and so that's all I'm trying to get a feel for. So where is our contract? Put some pressure on our contract. Okay, but where we at now? All right, so is there some type of liability, some type of exposure, like, okay, errors and omissions, contract law? But, okay, I get it. Nature happens. All right, where's my... All right, where's my supply? Okay, we, we, and, and again, this is us going back to like, okay, now how y'all gonna finish this now? Yeah, under contract. It's not for staff to do, it's staff to facilitate. Right, there's a difference. The question is, okay, when y'all gonna finish my building? So the public can get access to it. So that's all we're looking for is, I was looking for some information regarding that. I mean, it's nothing that, that the staff did wrong or did not do. That's not what this is about. It's a mother nature impacted us. That's fine. We understand, we yield. And we just simply want to respond adequately to that, but we want to make sure that we open communication, we talk. That's all we look for. Ma'am Chair, I yield. Thank you. We're good.
And, Madam Chair. And, and I know, we, we're not, this is not a debate for my Vice Chairman and myself, but I think, Sharon, I think when we're, the bigger question is, what is Plan B? Meaning, if the elevator can't be produced by these guys based on the situation, because here's one thing I will add. The, the construction and the, the work on the building hasn't stopped.
That's right.
Yeah, it's still moving forward. The elevator is one component, but it doesn't stop. So, I think it has changed the timeframe. I don't say that much, but I don't know until we can kind of know kind of where the elevator, if it's coming from this location or another. So, in that vein, we're moving forward. The question is, where do we move forward with the elevator? Correct me if I'm wrong, the construction and everything else, we still on the way with that thing. I still moving forward in my thoughts in that, Sharon.
Yes, construction is continuing, and we are, as I said, looking for an alternate source. If we can't get an alternate source, we'll get an effective date. And we may come back with a Plan B. But we'd like to have that solidified, and so by next meeting, we'll have a better update for the public, but it certainly will be well in advance of the July deadline.
And, and just FYI, it will be delayed. We just don't know kind of how long, what the delay will consist of, but the construction side of it hasn't stopped, just FYI.
And I, I wouldn't say it would be delayed. I would prefer to come back to you with more solid information.
Understood, and I, 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 I just, from being realistic, I think it will be delayed, just in fact, when we're trying to kind of get our arms around which is the elevator side of it. But, nothing has stopped with the construction, so I just want to make sure that the public understand that we haven't stopped construction, everything is still moving forward. And that component will be plugged in once we've realized what that is and where it will come from. So, and hopefully it'll come from the place, but it won't be damaged goods.
No.
Right, okay, all right. Thank you very much. All right.
You're welcome.
Yield, I yield back.
Okay. All right, we're gonna move on. Board of Commissioners to tab number nine. Authorization to rescind the award to Prime Foundation LLC and cancel the solicitation number twenty dash zero zero nine for construction of storage building for the Douglas County Fire Department as recommended by the Fire and EMS Committee. The vendor has requested a significant change order in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. And is, and is not recommending proceeding with the purchase at this time. We have our Director Evers on the line. Are you here, our purchasing director?
Yes, good morning, everyone.
Thank you so much. Good morning.
Last year, a bid opening was held for the solicitation of the construction of the storage building for the fire department. In response to the invitation, Douglas County received fifteen bids. All bids were evaluated for compliance with the bid documents and references were contacted. On February the sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, the Board of Commissioners approved the award of a contract in the amount of seven hundred ninety-four thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars to Prime Foundation LLC. After award of the contract, Prime Foundation presented the fire department with the change order in the amount of one hundred eighteen thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents, which exceeded the amount budgeted for this effort. Therefore, we're asking that this award be rescinded and the solicitation be canceled in its entirety.
Okay, thank you so much, Director Evers. Any questions from the board? Thank you.
Wait. Go ahead, I'll go, go ahead.
Commissioner Guy, do you have the floor?
Thank you, ma'am. So, Dawn, we're not going to build the store shed out there for the equipment?
At this time, the fire depart, the fire chief is not going to recommend building this at the time.
Okay, at one of the last meetings I attended with Fire and EMS, we considered part of it being like a lean-to shed that did, where the equipment did not have to be inside, but just sheltered from the weather. Was that considered in the bid process?
During the bid process, no, that was not considered.
Okay. Well, I think we need the shed to protect the, the equipment, but I hope we move forward with some kind of a shelter. So, this just has a delayed it a little bit more. I think this has been going on for well over two years now. So, anyway, maybe we can move forward with it in some manner. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Robinson, you have the floor?
No, I mean, their, their response adequately did it. I'm fine, Ma'am Chair. Go ahead.
All right, Board of Commissioners, I'm gonna move on to the next item. It's your pleasure. Thank you so much, Director Evers. Board of Commissioners, we're gonna go to tab ten, approval of an agreement with Tyler Technologies for the new tax software system and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. And this item actually was tabled on April sixth, twenty twenty-one. We have our Tax Commissioner here with us this morning. Tax Commissioner Baker.
Well, thank you. Good morning. Let's start off by saying I'd like to thank the new county administrator for visiting me. We had a very productive conversation. In the last five years that I've been here, that's the first time county administrator has visited my office, sat down with me and gone over concerns that I have for my office. So I really want to thank her. And I look forward to working with her. As far as on the agenda today, I think it's just a routine vote for you guys to recommend signing the contract, so. Nothing else to say on that unless you got questions. We've already got it approved. I think we just missed the signing part at last meeting, so.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, thank you so much, Tax Commissioner. Any questions or remarks from the board? If not, we're gonna move on. All right, we're gonna move on board to tab number eleven. Authorization for the fire department to enter into a pricing agreement with Zoll Medical, pending legal review and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Chief Jolivette, you have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to say hello to all the board members and the citizens, and also to our county manager. The cardiac equipment is, is, we use Zoll Medical for the cardiac equipment that we use. And we're trying to cut our costs by saving money by, by joining into an agreement with them. Some stats that we had from twenty nineteen. We ran about twenty-three cardiac emergencies in, in January, and in January twenty twenty, we had twenty-six, but alarmingly, in January twenty twenty-one, we had forty-one. So the cardiac emergencies are continuing to go up, and now this agreement will give us an opportunity to save some money annually by going into a cardiac agreement, well, a medical agreement with the cardiac company. So we're asking the board to consider it for approval. And I do have Michelle Mahaney, if y'all need, have any questions, any specific questions about Zoll on the line.
Okay. Board of Commissioners, we have any questions for Chief Jolivette or Michelle Mahaney regarding this request?
Ma'am Chair.
Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Ma'am Chair. Chief, thank you. I, I just want, one, I want to acknowledge, you know, it's important that we, we provide data. And just that, that sensitivity to show us, okay, why you're asking, what you're asking, which is, you know, I, I pay attention, like, okay, we got that many cardiac at that moment? This is the staff, like, it's important, guys, provide data. So we can appreciate the need. So that we can, we can support it versus just a rubber stamping. It's like, oh, no, I get it. Oh, okay. I understand. Right? Because that's, I mean, that, that helps me relate to my citizens, like, okay, that many instances, I almost double, oh, it did double. We need to have that, that, that type of equipment there. So there's my justification, like, okay, my citizens are, they got issues there. Ooh. Every moment. So I appreciate just that, that small change. That we're, we, you know, with your arrival, we're now getting what we're looking for. Which is, data is important. So thank you for that. And I, I, that's it. I just wanted to make that comment, that that mattered to me. That to be able to hear that, that now, like, okay, I get it. It's not, I'm gonna sit and deny, you need to have equipment to take care of the citizens. It goes without saying. I get it, but you, you gave me what I needed. So, you, thank you, Madam Manager, I think you get it. Ma'am Chair, I yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any other questions from the board? Now, we're gonna move on to the next item. Chief Jolivette, you have the next item as well, which is tab number twelve. Authorization to review all options and data to purchase two area fire trucks as per the Fire and EMS Committee recommendation. Chief Jolivette, you have the floor.
Again, thank you, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners, citizens of Douglas County. We have done a community assessment on the needs of the community, and we looked at, there's a gap for the fire, fire department service that we're providing, and it's, it's in form of a ladder truck. And we're in need of purchasing two ladder trucks to meet our needs for ISO and also meet the needs of our citizens. And what we've done is look at several funding options, but we want to exploit them a little bit further. Dealing with funding sources for two ladder trucks. The thing about the ladder trucks, after talking with our county administrator, who's very experienced in fleet and things of that nature. It's gonna take a little time to build the ladder trucks. It takes about roughly a year if you get them modified to, to the standards of the city of the county. They do have stock trucks that are already available, but the trucks that we're looking for will meet our needs for the western part of the county, for the eastern part of the county, and then we do, we also have a truck right now in the middle part of the county that we're using. So, we're looking at options to go ahead and proceed with finding, funding to secure ladder trucks. Like I said, we have several options that should be available to you. One is dealing with monies from the storage building, as well as some other fundings that we have from one of our trucks that were wrecked on twenty. So we're just looking to move forward expeditionally and getting some approval from the board to get some, some ladder trucks for our needs.
Thank you so much, Chief Jolivette, our chief. Any questions from the board regarding this request?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Guy, do you have the floor?
Thank you. Hello, chief. Good to see you again. Is this going to take the place of pumper trucks that we had scheduled to purchase?
No, ma'am. We, we still have the pumper trucks on schedule with our, our Splotz funding. At the talk with Mr. Gable, he showed us three different options in terms of Splotz funding to secure ladder trucks. And so this will not take the place of our schedule for the pumps that we have coming in. We have one scheduled for July, and then we have two scheduled for our, our fifth year in terms of our Splotz funding. So this, this will not affect that at all.
Well, ladder trucks, I think, are in the neighborhood of around a million dollars each. So, I just wondered, now, the storage building, so that's off the, the plate as far as building a storage building to house some equipment that we need to house?
Let, let me speak to that just quickly. Looking back, you know, the community needs are constantly changing, and one thing that, that, that's done jumped out at us is that ladder trucks that were wrecked in twenty nineteen, we had a ladder truck that was wrecked, and it, 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 we had to start focusing on meeting the ISO needs, and that was, that's gonna affect us directly. So, as far as the storage building, we're gonna look at it in the future. But right now, our immediate needs is to get those ladder trucks. I know I talked to you before, and, and we really need to get those ladder trucks up and going so we can take care of the Thornton Road area with all the storage build, I mean, all the manufacturing.
warehouses, yeah.
And then the, the western part of the county. So, that's something we're gonna look at in the future in our strategic planning. But right now, our immediate community needs are to get, get ladder trucks and go ahead and get them ordered so we can get them in.
Okay, my main concern was whether or not this was gonna replace pumper trucks that were needed, but you're saying it's not gonna affect the acquisition of future pumper trucks that we had scheduled.
Yes, ma'am. There, there are schedule, and one thing about it, the replacement plan that the county manager has brought into the, to the county is, uh, that's right in line with what we're trying to do as far as replacing those trucks, and, and so that's not affected at all.
Okay. Thank you very much. I yield back, madam.
Okay, thank you. Any other remarks from the board before we move on? Thank you so much, Fire Chief. Board of Commissioners, if you certainly would so kindly take a look at the approval of the expenses for tomorrow and be prepared to approve accordingly. And then also, Board of Commissioners, we have going forth a discussion item, which would be the Board Department for Annual Control Advisory Board position is coming. And then also, we have not only that, but a Board of Assessors Housing Authority Board, and that will, these items will be discussed in the executive session. So Board of Commissioners, I certainly want, if you had some remarks that you want to make before I chime in with our attorney to see if we need to go into executive session. Just wanted to check with you to make sure you didn't have any statements or remarks that you would like to make at this time. Being none, Attorney Bernard, do we need to go into executive session?
Yes, Madam Chair. My understanding, executive session is needed for personnel, and we will need Fred Perry to join us.
Okay. Okay, but that being said, Board of Commissioners, I, I believe I see your mouth moving, Commissioner Robinson.
Yes.
Yeah, there you are. Okay. You have the floor.
Yeah, and I could not get to, I, I mean, you have litigation as well. I'd like to get the status of one of our lawsuits. County attorney. So, Ken, can you amend the request?
Yeah, sure. Yes, sir. We, we can discuss litigation, it's pending, and personnel.
Okay. Ma'am Chair, that's all I needed. Thank you.
Okay. With that being said, Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in two seconds. We have a motion in a second, and I believe I heard Commissioner Carthens second first. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion, Board of Commissioners?
Wait, just to clarify, what we got, the motion was?
Madam Chair, you actually had me to motion.
Motion, okay. And who was the second? Okay.
Commissioner Robinson to second.
Madam Guy.
Okay, Madam Guy, that's the second. Thank you for yielding, Vice Chair. We thank you all for correcting me. We, any discussion, Board of Commissioners? We have a motion in a second. When I call you districts, please respond accordingly. District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Chairman, we have a five-o unanimous vote, and the motion carries to go into executive session. Clerk, you have, you are, now you have the will. You can tell us, give, provide directions, clerk.
Yes, ma'am. If you can just hang up from this call, but stay on teams, and I will call you into a separate meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Board of Commissioners, hold, hold on, clerk. Board of Commissioners, please feel free to, I would like for you to take a five-minute break. So it is now eleven thirty-one. If you could just at least start calling us at eleven thirty-six. We'd like for the board to take us just a five-minute break.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much, TJ, and thank you again, Board of Commissioners, for engaging in our executive session, and also thank you to the citizens, citizens of Douglas County for your patience. Board of Commissioners, do you have any announcements or remarks that you would like to make at this time regarding any upcoming events or anything that you may have on, coming down the pike?
Madam Chair.
Uh-huh, Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Just know much, so much as an announcement, we'll announce it tomorrow on the floor, but I do have a mental health, Children's Mental Health Forum is coming up this coming Thursday. I just want to make sure that our communications department, everybody has adequately got that information out to the public, so. And that it's an announcement on tomorrow's agenda. So I'll make the more official statement tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay. Any other board member? Okay, with that being said, I will just close things out today and just really, again, thank you, Board of Commissioners, Commissioners, for taking the time to engage in our work session, and wanted to remind the public that we are still ever plus present in this pandemic. And I just urge you to please make sure you adhere to those three W's. And I just urge you to please make sure you adhere to those three W's. Wash your hands repeatedly throughout the day. Watch your social distancing and also certainly wear masks in public, particularly those who have not been vaccinated. Right now, I would like to just urge you, if you just could consider vaccination, those citizens who have not taken the leap of faith to go with the vaccination. Right now, Douglas County, the last report from our Public Health Division was, we're at fourteen percent fully vaccinated in Douglas County, and the state average is thirty-four percent, which tells us we're behind the eight ball. So I'm encouraging you and also the Board of Commissioners just to, if you would consider, and it's certainly not mandatory, if you would consider the vaccine as we try to reach herd immunity. Herd immunity is around seventy percent, so that tells you we have a long way to go. But in the meantime, I ask that you still take those precautions and those measures to protect yourself and others around you. If there's nothing else to come before this, Board of Commissioners, Board of Commissioners, thank you today again. And thank you, our county administrator and our county attorney and all our staff and directors for taking the time to leave with us today for this work session. If there's nothing else to come before this body, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.
Bye, everybody.
Bye. Thank you.